I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, entertain a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the agenda is approved. We will move on to the Budget Work Session. This is discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year 25 Blackhawk County budget.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we've, we've all been working on getting some information put together. And this is probably going to be hard to read, but... Find the one I want. Okay. Hopefully, this is the right one. So...
Before you start, Michelle, I was just going to say you had sent out an email to us talking about, well, a timeline and what we needed to accomplish today and some of those. Would you recap that for everybody, just kind of what we're trying to target when we make these decisions?
Yep. So, I am, I am optimistic that we can reach some decisions today that will guide where we're going to go with our budget this year. So, the Department of Management has asked that we upload our, the information for our first budget hearing, which relates to how much property taxes and the property tax rate. And that hearing kind of replaces our maximum levy. If you remember, the maximum levy, it was kind of odd because it didn't include all our tax levies. It only included some of them. They've now taken that away and we now need to report it for all our tax levies. And they would like us to do that by March 5th, even though the law they passed says we have to do it by March 15th, to try to give the auditors a little more time to prepare this mailing that has to be sent out to every, I don't know, property owner or taxpayer, property owner in the county. So, we cannot have our actual first hearing until after that mailing has been sent out. And so, Department of Management has said you can't have that first hearing until at least March 25th. So, I, I would hope we can have that March 26th. Because after that hearing, we have to have another hearing and there has to be at least a 10-day publication period in between those two dates. And we're going to have to work with the paper, especially now that they don't print every day, to make sure we can get that 10-day waiting period in there before we have our second hearing. If everything goes perfectly, we might be able to have that hearing by April 15th, that week of the 15th. And so, that's what I'm hoping for. And I'm, I'm hoping that today we can talk through some choices that we have about how we can meet our, our levy limitations. I think that's kind of been the, a lot of the theme of our budget talks this year has been the fact that we are, for the first time, probably in recent memory anyway, we are really over a $3.50 levy cap for the general basic levy. Which really means, it's, it's just, it makes the conversation different. We aren't talking about how much taxes anymore. We're talking about what, what can we do and what can't we do? Because your only choice is to live under that cap or otherwise you have to use your fund balance for operating, which I, I would not want to recommend. It's not a very good long-term strategy if, and these are not made up of one-time things. So, that was probably a longer answer than you were hoping for to that question.
Well, I know you put a motion or a requirement on the agenda for the 5th and that was just to advertise or set that date for the 26th. So, that will be done. And then, when, when we have that hearing on the 26th, or maybe even on whatever you're thinking of doing for the Department of Management, is that when we'll set the high, the levy really at the highest and we can reduce, but we can never add, we can't add to it?
True. That, that is true. Once we, once I, once we set that, which I hope we will do on Tuesday, we can't go higher than that. So, yeah, that's, that's why walking through the decision points today is important. Because I want to take the information that we come up with today to create that levy documentation that will go to the paper.
And the Department of Management, while we're doing that portion of it, really for their benefit and they've requested it, it's the state of Iowa that really is the requirement.
Yes, right. It is state law requirement, yep.
By the 15th.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay, so, and this, this is hot off the presses. Oh, yeah, I'm going to apologize. It's going to be hard to read today. And you know what? I'm going to pause a moment and I'm going to email a copy to Mr. Little because he does not have this right now. At least I might if I can type. All right, now... We had requested that our departments tried to help us provide some options for how we could reduce, as you remember, we were, our gap for that $3.50 levy was 1.6 million. And so, we had asked our staff for ideas and I have made some suggestions too. And we, we just really haven't chosen any of those options yet. So, last night and even yet this morning, we were, we were putting some things together. I'm gonna, I think I'm going to start out kind of at a bottom line. I, without affecting personnel, other than that million-dollar turnover pool, I think this is accurate. I, we have identified some potential choices. That's all they are right now, right? But 1.441 million, leaving a balance of 166. And I'm trying to make that large enough that people can actually see it. We're just going to have to...
You, you sent that to Tom. Could you send that to us as well?
Yeah, you, you have a paper copy. Oh, Dan, yours might be behind your computer.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. I thought it might be easier for you to look at in paper. But I can send it to you too.
Gotcha. No, no, I'm good.
Okay. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to kind of start with the ending point and then we'll go back to the details. Maybe you don't have one.
So, you're, the totals you're referring to, 1.4?
Yes. Yep. There's 1.4 that's been identified. And so, then if we do talk about some hiring reassessment periods, you know, we can get it. We can make it. We can cut out the whole 1.6. But that's only if, you know, if those options are acceptable to everyone. I, I just kind of wanted to start out there that we at least do have an option on the table that can get us there, you know, should it be acceptable to everybody.
And that's what's highlighted?
Um, actually, it's all the rows.
Everything.
It's everything in, and I'm back to using the suggestions column. This worksheet now has some other columns added. It has the 3% calculation that I requested from departments. And it has an abbreviated summary of the responses that I received back from departments. So, I took some of the, some of the ideas that were already in there, pulled over some ideas from the departments, by no means all of them, but just in an attempt to try to get, to get our size 10 expenses to fit into our size 6 shoe that we have today, fit into today. But, but I, I hope we have a way to do it that won't hurt our operations too much. That was my goal, is to try to get there with, without significant changes in operations. So, I don't know if you want to talk through each line item? How would you like to proceed?
I don't know, but I was going to say, just for example, I'd have a question when you say the auditor's office and you had listed a total was 20,590, yet the suggestion is 49,474. The explanations for some of those, I guess, is just...
Yeah, well, I just have. Can't we move the whole thing? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm not sure. That, I guess, wanting an understanding of really what that's indicating then, if the amount was 20,590 and we have suggestions of 49,474.
Well, I'm looking for the 20,590.
Far left.
And I, okay, that's why. So, so the column to the far left was something that I provided to you earlier showing how much their non-personnel items increased this year. So, that column was just to give us a starting place to think about. And so, the, even the explanation that's in the suggestion column really does not necessarily relate to the explanation to the left of it. So, we gave the auditor's office a target of 31,899. And yesterday, Grant, I think it was yesterday anyway, Grant suggested that he change how his salary is coded. It's currently coded all to the general basic levy, but elections is generally paid for from the general supplemental levy. And apparently, we've just never charged Grant's salary to elections. So, he suggested this amount, which is approximately half of his salary, being moved towards elections.
So, in that instance, there's really no change operationally. It's just nice split, nice, I mean, it's, unfortunately, maybe didn't do it before or maybe not, but it's like that we have an opportunity to do it now.
Right. I mean, there's a, you know, the downside of that, if you will, is that raises taxes in the supplemental levy, which is probably one reason it wasn't done before. If you didn't need to charge it to the general supplemental, then why do that?
Okay.
But our circumstances are different, so...
And that makes a big difference, or can. Like I said, that's a sizable, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, that...
Go ahead. And you had sent out an email on Tuesday after the meeting in regard to the 3% budget change impacted. I just read it this morning. I didn't have a chance to read it before today. And you wanted to know if we should take formal action in regard to our requests from the department heads. Are you saying some departments just didn't even communicate with you?
I'm really not saying that. I just was told that we, you probably should have voted before I asked, that I don't have the authority to ask anybody to do anything, so...
That wasn't quite the way it was. It wasn't that you don't have the authority to ask. It was just that certain things, like say, when it's a board directive type of thing, it requires board action on. Suggestions, definitely not. So, just for clarification, but if you were thinking that we would ask others maybe to speak during the budget session, that can happen at any time. Thanks.
Yep. Yeah. So, that's all that was relating to. That I didn't realize we didn't have the appropriate action taken to make that request. We did hear back and we do have suggestions, so...
Now, many of these are suggestions that don't impact our supplemental, or the, actually, the basic. They would be other, like, we have some that are capital, correct? Just to kind of...
Correct. This, this first section, though, I've, I've tried to break it out so that the first option I showed you is only the general basic levy. So, I don't, I don't believe, unless I've got some mistakes in here, I don't think I have supplemental or capital in that first subtotal getting to the 1.6 million in reductions. There's a separate section for the general supplemental and rural levies down below, but that's all subtotaled separately. Yeah.
You want to go line by line, kind of?
Yeah, I think...
For the explanations or questions?
And we can have each department talk about their own too, if you wish.
So, what's listed in that suggestion column, though, are ones that make the impact?
They're the ones that add up to the 1.6 right now. In the, just in the proposal that you have, I mean, we can take things out, add things back, whatever we want to do.
So, essentially, as we look at these things, we have the option to, either, either it gets cut or, or some, you know, we could potentially fund balance with some of these.
Yep.
Too. Those are the two options, basically, that we're looking at as we try to fill this hole.
Yes, although honestly, these expenses I would prefer not to take out of fund balance because they truly are operating. But yes, you technically would have that ability to do that. All right, so I think we've talked through the auditor's office.
Before we finish with the auditor's office,
Please.
I just wanted to clear this up. Now, you show that finance position being shared with the auditor's office. Doesn't that decrease our budget? Wasn't there a full position in our budget?
If you'll notice, I don't have an amount for that in the suggestions column. So, right now, that's not on, in my suggestions.
Okay. But there's only, okay, between the two offices, there's just one salary?
No, between the two offices, there are two today.
Okay, so if it was shared, then that would be a general basic reduction?
It would, if the board chooses to do that.
Okay.
And as I said, I was trying not to address staffing in this first section. So, there should be nothing, I don't think. I'll apologize if I'm wrong and some department has it. Yes, but that's not the column we're talking about right now. You're correct. That, I, I had, you know, I put a target for our office of reductions and so my suggested response to that was to share. But that is not, what's in the suggestions column, which I'm probably doing a bad job of explaining, that the one we're focusing on, that the options that are in this option are in the suggestions column. So, there's other suggestions on this page that are not included. That's what I need, that's what I'm not making. And I apologize about that because, yeah, so... Yeah. Okay, so... And that, the first number happens to be an orange box. Those, they're orange because they're different from the versions that you board have seen before. These are changes that have been made this week. I was just trying to draw attention to things that changed. The other things that are different on here, obviously, are the department responses. Because you have, you know, that, that was weren't on the previous one from the last time we met. Okay, so... All right, this is where, yeah, some last-minute things probably don't have good explanations on. I'm going to jump down to the treasurer's office. The first line that has 50,000 on it, that is an increase to interest revenue. Billy and Linda did some work to go back and review that. And between the three of us, we think we're comfortable increasing that budget by that amount. So, I'm, we're adding that. We also, and I, I apologize, I don't have the explanation on the right row. That, their next row has a change of 21,150. That is the cost to add the queuing system. We're, we're planning to do that with ARPA. So, I'm moving that out of this levy into the ARPA bucket. Again, we'll still do it. It just doesn't affect the 350 cap. The next department is the recorder. And again, if you prefer to hear directly from the departments, just mention that, that would be fine. Sandy, in her proposed responses, felt comfortable increasing her passport revenue by that amount. So, that 17,587 is an increase to passport revenue. The next change that is on here is human resources. And we discovered this week that there's a small amount that human resources charges to other entities, such as the assessor's office, I believe, that we hadn't budgeted as revenue. So, we are, we're adding on here.
Did you want to speak to that, Amanda, or, I mean, I see you're up, but I was going to say...
Well, or I can.
No, I, I...
But yeah, that was just, I actually had forgotten to include that as revenue and I might have even forgotten to do it for this fiscal year. But we do get money from the assessor's office. So, do you want me to talk through any of the alternatives or not yet?
I don't, that's up to the board. If you, if you would prefer the departments talk through the total things, alternatives that they gave, we can do that. Or we can just go through this...
I'd like to just go through these suggestions first.
So, we may, may get to that later. All right. The next department listed is information technology. And in his response back, Al indicated that there was a project he was considering using professional fees to do that he doesn't think he needs now. So, he's willing to reduce his budget by that $20,000. The maintenance budget, in their responses, one of the items that they included was reducing their equipment repair budget by $5,000. And maybe if you would like to know more about that, maybe we're, or would want to speak to that.
Well, we can go through the list first and maybe go back to some of those. Or what's the board's preference? I was going to say, should we do it now?
Through this.
Get through the list, yeah.
Okay. All right. Medical examiner, honestly, I just cut that, the 12,101. I was just trying to cover what they actually spent in 2023. This will make that budget lower. So, we're basically rolling the dice that, you know, they have fewer transports to the, ankeny, to the state medical examiner's office.
That's transportation only, then?
Well, it, yeah, I think I will say it's mostly, or the cost of autopsies. I guess that's in that same account. So, it'd be, yeah, a few less autopsies.
Okay.
Public health, I'm suggesting 26,000. Caitlin had sent a worksheet and she had offered some more reductions to her expenses. We did find 20,000. That was actually a COVID program that's gone. So, we, we truly don't need that 20,000. And then, the 6,000 would just be a combination of maybe printing fewer brochures and things like that. Just other items to, to cut out of their budget. Next one that's listed on here is general assistance. And Colleen and I talked about that and we are proposing reducing her shelter budget by that amount and hopefully we'll be able to still meet all the needs that come in. Veterans Affairs, when they responded, they suggested cutting their funeral budget by, I believe, 10,000. Yes, and their shelter budget by 4,697. So, that's the 14,697 that you see for them. And they, they have not used those two full budgets for the past several years. So, we're, again, rolling the dice that things don't increase. Some things out of the board's activities that I reduced. I took $12,000 out of professional fees. We had some things in there that were ARPA-related. So, they're funded a different way, so I'm, I'm trying to pull some of that out now. The 659, we just had never discussed, but that was the increase in the community funding. After you pull this out, there would still be 100,000 in the budget. And again, I don't know if you want to do that or not do that. It's just an option. We still have the question here about the CGIS capital money. Most of our departments, well, I think all of our departments, for capital, we request a detailed list of what you're going to purchase and we, we seem to not be able to get that right now. That 63,000 is an increase over prior years. They typically budget 12,000 there. And I don't know, that's in there because I don't have documentation of what it would be used for right now. The next item on here is the marketing coordinator's budget. On Tuesday, you approved a separate budget for the brand launch that we expect to be used by June 30th. And Gabby had said that her 2025 budget could be reduced by that 6,000 if we did the brand launch separately. So, that's what I'm doing on there. For conservation, in their responses, they had suggested that they could increase Blackhawk Park camping fees and also some commodities sales. And so, I have only included those two revenue increases in that amount that you see there right now. The next item, we had already talked about moving the insurance deductible funding to the general supplemental levy. We had talked about moving some deputies' fuel to the rural fund and I, I don't have documentation of that amount yet. That was an amount I had just guesstimated, I guess. So, once we get, they're obtaining some information from the City of Waterloo Garage to be able to track fuel by vehicle so we can figure out what's actually used by the rural deputies. And then, still have the change in the general fund transfer to secondary roads. And then, I'm not sure why I have a negative number there. I think that's a mistake on that row. That was probably supposed to be another 50,000, but it's, we'll fix that. Another idea is, we currently charge only 75% of our patrol deputies' salaries and benefits to the rural fund. This would move approximately half of that remaining 25% to the rural fund. I did not move all of it because we are also going to bump into the rural levy cap, unfortunately, which I was really hoping not to do, but this, that would at least get that much salary out of the general levy. And then, one thing I realized, we did have the $25,000 remodeling request for human resources was still in the operating, so I am taking that out because we'll either do it with the capital or we may not do it. I don't know. So, all those changes got us down to close. We're still short 166,000. Unfortunately, I, running, we were all running out of ideas by that point. So, I had several departments that felt like their only options for meeting the requested reductions was to have hiring delays or some kind of vacancy dollars. And I, I was really trying not to include those in here because I feel like we've already accounted for that in the million, the million-dollar turnover that we already have budgeted. But I couldn't quite get to where we needed to go. So, we have on here currently a few more. And that is basically just one option of how we can backfill the 1.6 million that we need to. I did not, in a lot of cases, I did not take all the department's suggestions. Probably a little arbitrary, but that, you know, that would be up to all of you to...
Appreciate it. I guess I would welcome, focused on just the suggestion column still, of welcome department heads to give their reaction of just how, how this would impact you for the next year.
I do have a couple of questions, just as I was going through...
I do have a couple of questions, just as I was going through the budgets that were presented. And so some of it's just questions to refresh memory. Maybe Nate, if you can speak to this. Right now, it feels like we could add 50,000 from, on the revenue side, from commissary. And we've got...
From years past, we've had, we added $300,000 to it this year to bring it up, just as a safe estimate.
Years, years past, 2022 was 359, which was about $100,000 more than expenses. '23 was 314, but still about $100,000 over expenses. Right now, we're only at 50,000 over expenses from what we've got budgeted.
Okay, and I think, like I said, I think we bumped that up for this next fiscal year to be a little bit more in line with what we've currently got. I don't have the numbers in front of me, so...
But on the revenue, I mean, the revenue is...
We bumped both the expenses.
Yeah, you bumped, well, we bumped the anticipated revenue up, but it doesn't meet the actuals, right? So, yeah, it was at 200,000 in '24, but the actual, and, well...
It was over six, I believe.
Yeah, so I just feel like there's, there's some room to add some dollars on, on the revenue side, which can help offset...
Well, so, a couple of things that we need to say about that. And I'm gonna jump in, Nate, and you can correct me when I'm wrong.
All right.
Nate and I discussed that revenue. He has some concerns that a lot of, so all of that revenue is paid for by inmates. And they had some revenue sources from the federal government during COVID that will no longer be there. So we have a little bit of a concern that they won't have the funding to do as much as they have been doing. So that's one reason we didn't push it up higher than we did. We did, we did work on that, and, you know, we had history showing that revenue and expense was way exceeding what we budgeted every year for the last several. So we did bring it up substantially. But the other issue with that is that fund is restricted money that can only be used for the benefit of the inmates. So it, it won't help the 350 bucket. We do want to have that budget be somewhat realistic, which is why we increased it as much as we did.
When do those federal dollars expire?
It wasn't actually, Grant, that was when the stimulus checks, everything were going up. We saw a significant spike. Sadly, that's how a lot of people chose to use their stimulus checks, was to funnel it to their loved ones in the jail. Our expenses, our revenues definitely went up during that time.
But those, those checks, those checks...
They've been gone for a couple of years, yeah.
Correct. And so we're still, we're on track for 360-ish?
There probably is room to bump that up a little bit. The thing is, obviously, I have no control over the revenue that we bring. It's not like we can make extra phone calls. It's strictly based on the inmates and what they spend. And obviously, the phones and everything ties into that. And one thing we see, too, as our inmate counts are higher, that makes all of our other expenses higher, but that revenue does go up. When the headcount goes down, it helps all of our other expenses. But then obviously, that revenue curtails with it, too, because 200 people don't spend as much as 250 people do. So there may be some room to bump that up a little bit.
Sure.
You just have to understand that I literally have no way of controlling the revenue that comes into that, that is entirely up to the inmates and what they spend.
I was focused on, I wanted to get the expenses to a more accurate, reasonable range, I guess, because that affects, you know, we focus, and every governmental body does, we focus a lot on the tax rate, right? But the other part of the budget responsibility that we have is we're establishing our maximum expenses by major program for all 10 of our programs. So I wanted to get our expenses up into the range that they will likely be in. And that's why we were pushing them up this year.
Another, another question on, can you just refresh my memory here? We've got a pretty good increase in licenses and permit fees, or expense, it was like
What was that?
I think it's gun permits, or there's some kind of, I'm trying to remember now. There's some permit that maybe only renews every three years.
I honestly couldn't tell you. Tony had a conflicting appointment, couldn't be here this morning, so I'm gonna fill in the best I can, but that one, honestly, I don't recall the increase.
You need to refresh our memories, too. We don't have it right in front of us. And so what were, what was your question then?
Just, just wondering what the dollars, what the increase was.
I think it's some kind of permit that only renews once every three years. Unfortunately, my memory's, I can't remember exactly what it is. I, that's the conversation I recall having with Tony.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I guess I have a suggestion on community service funding that I'll, that I'll put forward. I do feel like that is something that, when, that we can continue to do when we have healthy reserves, and that reserves can be an okay use for that. And if we got, if we got to the point that the county was in a position that we weren't able to, then that's it. But so I think that we could, what I would suggest is, I still do want to see a line item budgeted particularly for the food bank of, I was just leaving $50,000 in here, but then funding 250,000 for community services out of, out of reserves.
Yeah, I was gonna say the 250 for being that we saw that we still meet the needs of some community funding requests?
Right, yeah, that would be, well, all the applications that we've gotten, that's where that would come from.
Well, I guess, there are some of these suggestions, I guess, I think, like I said, we probably do need to hear, not that you won't, I won't ask to hear that again, but from the department heads, because I, and I know, like I said, there are important needs in the community as well. But depending on what we're asking some of our staff to go without, from a county budgeting standpoint, I want to make sure, I guess, we're not doing that. And then, because there are, like you said, we have healthy reserves. I like the fact that, Michelle, like you mentioned, there's some of those you've called rolling the dice a little bit, and kind of being conservative. But I think there are several, maybe areas, or some areas at least, where we can be conservative. And then if we find out with the reserves we have, if there is a need as we go through next year, or go through the following, I guess, even a few months and next year, and evaluating that maybe pretty regularly, seeing where we're at. But that we do have reserves there that could be used, not to use them, I guess, right upfront now, because we're trying to conserve those. But when we're looking at giving money to others, I guess, we do have to consider how important our needs are, and what we're supposed to be doing with our tax dollars as well for the public. So...
I like Chris's suggestion. That knocks us down to less than 100,000, if I'm not mistaken?
The two.
To reach the 350 levy cap?
Well, I've already pulled out 659, so...
And that knocked it down to what, 125?
100.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, so you have 100 left in there to fund. You could use part of that 100 for the food bank if you chose, or use the 100 for community agencies and add another 50.
I would, I was, I was suggesting just leaving in just 50,000 there, and then funding the entire rest of it from, from the reserves, the 250 from the reserves.
Did you have other questions?
Yeah, I've got another question, maybe from Mike. I was, when I was going through, I've got a note in here about the miscellaneous repairs and labor. I've got, and I can't even read my own chicken scratch, so I'm sorry. There's maybe a roof project, but that's, that currently isn't coming out of capital. That's coming out of...
Operating.
Operating. I wonder if, if there might be some flexibility to put that in the capital versus keeping that into, because that came out to, from maybe 45, maybe 65, I really can't read.
Well, I believe that was, I think that repair was 20.
That's the number I had in my head. I could be wrong.
Oh, what is the other thing I wrote then?
Oh, rotary. Then, then the rotary building. Was that the siding?
Siding and windows.
Yep, and that was...
About 230, 230,000.
But that one is, that one's a capital.
That was capital.
Yeah, so that's not factored into this list. The 20,000 roof is, because I was considering that more repairs and we'd like to be able to do those with operating. They're not probably bond eligible necessarily, so I didn't move it, but it could be.
Thanks.
So still doing it, but just moving it.
Well, it'd be coming out of reserves.
Just trying to figure out how to get under that 350.
I know. I agree with you.
Need more suggestions like Grant's salary. That was a great one.
I mean, we, there is, there is a conversation. I know that it wasn't included in these suggestions, but there, there are ultimately, there's some conversation that needs to happen between where that accounting position falls. Right now, there's two that's presented. And we haven't had a discussion if we want to hire two, if we want to hire one, what that looks like. But that's 94,000 at a minimum.
Right. I know, I, I want to hire two if, if we can, if we can stay there, is, is my goal.
Can, is there, no, there was talk, I guess, between the two departments about a shared position in the last few months. Not that there couldn't be a second position added at some time. Would it make sense to try to do and help us out, too, with this, to try to share that position initially? And see how that works, and if that can be done, or between the two departments? Any thoughts on that, Grant, or...
That's up to the board.
Thank you.
Like I said earlier, I think it's best for two positions. I see problems sharing a position, but if that's the board's wish, we will do our best to make it work.
Thank you. Michelle?
Again, I had originally requested that the position be split. I, I think it, I mean, it's, yeah, there's work to do to figure out how to split it. And yes, it can get messy and things like that. But, you know, I think if, you know, if that's what we can have, we'll make the best of it.
Well, we can find out at some point. The messiness is too much, and we need another position.
Correct.
Or that it works well, and we could still need another position next year or something, too. Because the relationship between the auditor's office and finance director is typically a pretty close one, and should be, I mean, with all departments, but especially those two working together.
Yeah, it, it really needs to be, I mean, that's, they generate a lot of the detail work that gets pulled into what the finance side of it needs to do. So, yeah. I agree.
I'm supportive of one position, whether we split it or we assign it to departments. I don't know that I'm, I'm there for two positions, given the, but I could...
Thoughts?
Yeah, I, like, I'm with Davis.
I don't have a clue what you're talking about. What positions? Are you acting about funding two new ones, or a half of a one and a half of one, or what?
No, I think it's, the two are in, currently in our numbers now. One for auditor's office, one for board supervisor's office. And we are, would like to take action on possibly having, combining, I guess, the two posi, that, the two positions into one, as far as assisting both departments.
And one of those positions is currently funded. It's currently in budget, so that's...
So it would reduce out about $100,000 from us.
So would that be a savings, or not a savings, but that would help towards cutting this budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Because raising revenue, that doesn't make any sense to me. If you raise revenue to try to get this budget down, the question is, why wasn't that revenue at that initial budget proposals? The only way you're gonna cut the expenses is cut the budget. Simple as that. You can't borrow from reserves and borrow money by bonding. It's the same thing at home. You don't take money out of your savings account, or you don't go to the bank and borrow money to pay your bills. You live within what you got. We haven't really cut anything, in my, my opinion. We just need to sacrifice some things this year. Simple as that.
Tom, this is Grant. Just want to make sure we, there's something up here. If I understand what Michelle told us earlier correctly, we do have two positions in the budget right now, one for the auditor's office, one for the board office. And if there's a shared position, then we would be reducing the budget by the amount of one of those positions.
Yeah, I think that's great. That's a start right there.
So do we want to take action on that? I mean, do we want to give you things for actionable now? We do before we leave, I know.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to show you at least one option of getting there without, that has all the new positions in it, that suggestions column that you have. Just wanted to show you that option before you started making decisions, so. But yes, I think...
This, so, yeah, everything we have has every position that it's been requested the other day.
Yes, it does.
We've made no, no decisions.
Yeah, yeah, someone wants to make a, offer a motion to, on that position, let's, we can, we can do that now?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to, instead of go with one shared position between the auditor's office and the finance director. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Oh. All right, the resolution carries. Do we want to take action on the community service funding yet?
Sure, make a motion, Chris.
All right, I'll make a, a motion that, that we reduce what's asked for in this column to include a $50,000 line item for the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, and $250,000 of a community service pool we created out of the reserves.
I'll second.
So that's a total of 300,000?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
I would like to have done that one later, I guess, depending on some of our budgets. I'll support it. Yes.
Little?
I support every one of those agencies, especially the food bank, but when you don't have the money, I vote no.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
So, Michelle, if I'm following correctly, that's 150,000 not included in the suggestions column that we have...
Close to that, yep.
I'm comfortable with moving forward on, on that re-roof project to come out of capital versus coming out of our general. So I'd make the motion for 20,000 for the roof to be pulled from capital as opposed to our general.
I'll second it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
So, yeah, go ahead, Grant.
Just trying to catch up here with these motions, so want to make sure I got that right. You, you want to pull 20,000 for a roof that's in conservation from the operating fund and put it in the capital?
Correct.
Okay.
Of the 21.5, pull the 20.
No.
I just want to be clear.
No, the 21.5 was, is increasing fees and revenues. The 20 was in there, was in there, whatever this thing is.
Just move that.
Yeah, yeah, just to shift them over.
Right, so that will actually be, I think that will have to come out of the fund balance.
Yeah.
Not the bond column, but...
Yep.
All right, everybody clear?
Yes.
All right, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Would this be decreasing the capital then for the budget?
No, Tom, actually, we're going to be increasing the use of reserves and reducing the taxes, current taxes, I guess I'm going to call it.
No.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
I have a question, Michelle, and you've probably already talked about this, the increased cost for the, actually, what the 17, I'm looking at recorder's office.
Yes, that's, that's passport revenue. She went back and looked at her revenue and what performance is doing and actually, there's also potential they will be in, getting an increase in rates from through the state, but that probably won't come until next session. So that's why she feels like she can do that.
And I shouldn't, if she's here, I should let her speak, but I got this here. She might be online. I guess she could be online, I don't know, we can't tell.
I don't think we have many online too that I can see.
So revenue wise, we're good on that one. The.
Boss?
Now, some of these increases are these savings, I guess, that this will delay filling vacancies until the goal is reached. That was the treasurer's office.
The ones in green, yes. That's the section in green on the next page. I would suggest, I, I think with, with cutting the community service agency's 50,000 and removing one new position, we might be about wiping that out.
Okay.
So then we can just stick with our turnover pool that's already established, which I think would be a really great.
Yep.
So if we don't need to make a motion on that, you think we're comfortable with doing that? Just not, I'm just asking, Michelle, she's okay.
Well, I am, but you should probably just, I mean, I do think you as a group should probably say that. It's coincidental that the three changes about add up to the, those highlighted in green, so that, that, that totals about 166,000 and we're at 165, I think, so I think we're good right there, as long as that's what you all want to do.
Yes.
Dr. Beckley deals with dead people, so we can roll the dice with him, I assume anyway, because we have to pay what we have to pay.
Yeah, I, you know, it, it's interesting, for 2023, which of course, the last full year you have to work with is 2022, right? He had, his actual expenses exceeded the budget by 48,000, and so I did request that the 24 budget be increased by 48,000. So now, we've completed the fiscal year 23 and even, he was, it's like 100,000 over budget, so that 65, he was 65,000 more over budget than even if we added the 48. So that's, that's what's hard about that. We do know that the autopsy fees have increased and I, I don't, I think the transportation from Mercy One and the funeral homes has actually been pretty stable. So some of that is more cases, some of it is different cases that just are requiring more expense. But yeah, we'll, you've had to do budget amendment, I, I don't know, I have a little bit different philosophy, I don't like to do budget amendments toward the end of the year, that use your reserves, because I came from a place where we didn't have extra reserves, so I was not feeling like that was an appropriate way to balance your budget. I wouldn't want to do that at home and I don't want to do it here, but sometimes you need to. And the medical examiner is one budget that we had routinely over the last several years needed a budget amendment, so I've been trying to move it up just to meet what we think it will be. If we're, you know, if I'm off by 12,000, that's a lot less than 100,000, so we'll deal with that.
And we could be off by more, obviously, so I appreciate the effort, just trying to make it reflect accurately the numbers.
It could be the other way, you know, we don't know for certain.
But I just thought, yeah, if we can, we could possibly cut that one more, actually, then and still have to deal with.
Potentially.
Whatever it is and doing it.
It's in.
I think we've had a budget amendment about every year for the medical examiner. It's a moving target.
Yeah. Yep, it is.
Already done.
And what's compounded it is the increase of wages on his assistance over the years.
Yeah, we did a couple of years ago.
Yes, um, public health, can we go over what those changes were again?
Public health, and I wish that Caitlin was here, but I don't think I see her. The 20,000 of the 26, she just has said she doesn't need. The 6,000 will be a little more painful, and I would leave that for her to identify which. She had given me a list, potentially reducing training, producing professional books, you know, resources, I guess I would call for them, advertising, printing, I don't, you know, I would leave it up to her to choose which of those items and, yeah, I, so, and you, you wouldn't have to do the six if you're not comfortable with, but I definitely would encourage you to go ahead and do the 20,000. She definitely told me that was not a problem.
I said, I, I was just concerned about the six, because I know they're trying to be more efficient with their printing yesterday, and that might end up biting us, I don't know.
It could, so you, you're more than welcome to make that back out.
Right. Well, I, I would, I would make a motion on, on the health department to go with the 20,000 reduction, but leave the, the other six in.
Yeah, if she's, it's unfortunate she's not here to say that, but if she's, if you feel very comfortable that she's okay with the 20.
Yes, I, I do. And I'll apologize in advance if I got that wrong, but I don't think so. She was, she seemed pretty confident of that one.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
The resolution carries. And with general assistance, I mean, does that seem to be tracking with where?
That's why Colleen and I think it'll be okay. That has fluctuated, but even when we look at where it's at year to date, she had been a little concerned, because if you remember, we've changed the guidelines so that they, they increase so that people that are getting more assistance or income can qualify, but it, at this point is not having a hugely negative impact on her budget, so we're hopeful that we can make it with that.
And if not, if there tends to be some need again during the year, we have.
We'll be revisiting you and requesting funding. Yeah, exactly.
We've, I mean, there's 360 budgeted and 160 used through half of the year, so, but there's still 40,000, assuming it.
Yeah.
The second half doubles, right? There's still, there's still a good cushion there, so.
Some of it probably is higher this part of the year, but I.
Sure.
Know that, so that's why I think we'll, Colleen was very comfortable, and again, I don't think she's here either, I keep looking for people, but.
Yeah, I, I am here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, yep, I definitely truly believe that the budget will be okay with that 3% decrease in the shelter, just looking at where we are this fiscal year and where we've been for actuals for the previous fiscal years, I think that will be fine. I hope I'm speaking correctly on that, it's just really hard to judge from year to year, but I'm confident that that should be fine.
And you understand, Colleen, too, that we are appreciating your comfort level with this, but if there's a need, then you bring that to us and we, we take care of it at that time.
Yep, I had that discussion with Michelle also, if need be, I would just have to ask for an amendment, but hopefully that won't happen, but can't predict that for sure.
Oh, that's what amendments are for.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Then make the motion for the reduction in the general assistance for 22,192.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Are there any of these kind of remaining suggestions that, you know, department heads want to have the opportunity to speak to?
So, good morning, board.
Good morning.
And supervisor Little, Shalando, I just had a, I've been talking with our commission and we feel that it's safe for us to give that, that 14-6 based off of our historical numbers. We just looked at also our revenue that we take in, and in the last seven months, we've already taken in more than the 14-6 that we're making a cut, so, and that's a yearly, our, our revenue coming in from just donations is well over this amount every year. So we're safe to be able to, if it's approved, give back that 14-6 without hurting any of our other operating expenses in a standpoint. And we looked at some of the other pluses and minuses with the cremation services. We have 26 plots donated to our office that's just sitting there waiting on to be given to veterans, and so we, we have a lot of pluses, and so this does not affect our budget and operating expenses. Only got a full-time employees for, I'm only 1% of the county's population out of the 7,000 veterans that we serve, we only serve around 2,100 a year. So we are safe to say that this 14K would not hurt our operating budget, and we got five months left of this year, and I guess I can come before you and give you our general services at the next meeting, kind of give you update on where we're at, but we're well below our percentages in, in our budget. And some of that is just the, the, we, we've been very particular on helping repetitive veterans when it comes to needs in some of these areas, and so we're getting better at that. And then we're also leveraging, levying some of the other outsourced resources out there within the county to help veterans when it comes to some of these areas like shelter and things of that nature, but for the most part, the way the economy is going right now, things are improving, we're not seeing a lot of people come in for needs for funeral services or they're, they're homeless or they're, they're in need of, and then we can support that with the donations that we get from our community. Just wanted to share that.
Excellent. And again, me, similar to general assistance, that if we did run into a hole, like we would, we don't want to be denying services.
Appreciate you thoughtfully sharpening the pencil, right, not impact service. Also, those are impressive shoes. Man.
I appreciate the sincere efforts.
Yep.
That were put forth.
I'll make that motion to adjust Veterans Affairs 1,000, or 14,697.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We can just do this as a motion if folks want to, or we can continue with the roll call.
However, I guess if somebody says.
Grantie of a preference.
I don't have a preference.
All right, all right, I'll just do roll call.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, and the 6,000, the, the marketing coordinator.
I'll make a motion to remove 6,000 from the marketing, what is it, from the board, from the board line for the marketing purposes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any, or discussion or questions? Roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
So do we move down to the next group down there as far as the impacts?
Yeah, is there, is there anything remaining up in this?
Yeah, is there?
Yeah, there's a, information tech.
Yes.
That's a, that's a decrease of 20,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What's that? Is that from, I'm sort of confused as to where, where the notes are on some of these.
Yeah, me too.
It's off to the right, it says cut 20,000 from professional services.
But then, okay, so then the department response is then an additional 10 from the computer repli.
He, he, we gave him.
If we were to.
Oh, you're here today.
You did it. I, at this point, I didn't incorporate that 10,000 in, in my suggestions. You could if you want to, or you can go more, I mean, you know.
Sure.
But I just took the 20, because we're pretty confident we don't need it.
Okay, so, Ali, IT director, I just offered that up as an additional savings, just to, want to be a team player and try to help the county save money. How we would achieve that is kind of delay computer replacements on desktops in particular for a year. Generally, computers have five-year replacement cycles, desktops are a little more forgiving, you can kind of stretch them to a six-year without replacing them. I do not recommend that for laptops, but desktops, we could probably make that happen. So if that's what you guys choose to do, we can certainly do that.
Can you speak to the 20,000 for the professional services?
That was a, a project that we were going to do for a backup service, and we kind of had that slated, and we decided that in the grand scheme of things, we probably can not do that this year, because we want to make sure that we're helping the county out in the cutting, so I'm, I'm okay with doing that. We do have a couple.
Is that a project that we're going to end up wanting to do next year? Or is it?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to plan it out so that we can maybe do it in-house.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to change directions and make sure that we, we attempt to do a lot of things ourselves. I do have a couple of other things that I did ask for in this last budget session, and those are still in place within the budget and, and the initial askings, but this one, we are comfortable with removing this.
For the time being, I'm, I'll make the motion to reduce IT budget by 20,000 for professional services.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
For the time being.
Yeah, but if, if we end up having to come back and have a discussion on computer replacement.
We're good.
But I think for now, yeah.
Another budget amendment possible, type of thing, sure.
I think I run most of my desktops for about 15 years. It's not recommended, but it's possible, but.
So this is 20,000 for professional services.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Uh, next one that we haven't chatted through is maintenance, Rory, we've got 5,000 in the, in the suggestion column, you sort of speak to what that, what that piece is. Obviously, there's more in the department response, but.
Rory Giving, facilities director, absolutely. Typically, I would not recommend lowering any kind of equipment repair, but the rationale there was with the aggressive ARPA HVAC project that we have coming up, we plan on really addressing a, a good deal of our large equipment. that we have coming up, we plan on really addressing a good deal of our large equipment. So, I'm hopeful by doing that, that will give us a little bit of wiggle room in this equipment repair line item. So, that was the rationale behind that one.
Okay. I'll make a motion to reduce the maintenance line for $5,000.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done. Roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Are there other professional fees? Michelle, you know, we probably assumed since post-COVID, everything was going up. Have we seen increases in just about everything? I thought in areas of insurance, professional fees, even some of our projects, our contracts, that we've built in an increase for most and could recognize, I guess, throughout the year that we come in over what the budget, I mean, over what the project costs come in or the contracts, that type of thing. So, we could end up being able to absorb these a little more easily. You know, I think kind of like at the end of the year or two when we have had reserves to add to the year. I thought as long, I like the fact that I want the staff comfortable, I guess, with coming back to us when we need, when they need to.
Yeah.
And not fearful that we made the budget or they're over budget, or that's, I guess, my concern. I guess that we're all comfortable with that.
And I share that philosophy.
Yeah, to me, the, we're trying to get under the cap.
That's, yeah.
But I think it's important to reiterate to staff that we're, we have reserves. We've got the, we've got the ability to make things whole. We just want to make sure that we're not overtaxing folks either.
Yes.
Right? And because of the cap, we, we've got to make some, just tightening.
Yeah, making the kind of decisions today doesn't, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. My concern is when I looked at the trajectory of individual departments from years past, it frightens me.
Do we need to take an action on these suggested revenue changes for like, for example, like the treasurer's office and?
Oh, as far as them increasing?
Yeah.
Fees? It'd be nice to hear from them what they think if they, you know, this is something that they would have thought about maybe previously and just not done or?
If anyone wants to speak to them.
Mike, did you want to talk to that at all?
I feel confident in your estimates.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the?
I'm asking.
Other mic.
Other mic.
I looked over the mic and I'm like, I'm going to be asking you that.
If you're, if you're going to increase camping fees.
We're going to make you do the rest.
Thanks, Mike.
So, we're, so we're talking about our revenue increases, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, very simple. At budget time, I talked about what we put in our budget for revenue, $383,000 for camping revenue. Did we, did we aim maybe a little low? We sure did because I've stood up here a lot of times when we flooded and we couldn't make budget. And, and I, and I explained at the time, I mean, there was conversation about maybe Blackhawk Park, maybe we shouldn't even camp there anymore. And I made comments at that time that, I've been here a long time. I've seen the cycles. And when it's good, it's great. When it's bad, it's horrible. And we went through a long period of time where we couldn't make budget there. But true form, climate changed. We've had three years now that we have not had to close that park. I'm not seeing that in the 32 years I've been here. It's never happened, and the forecast is that we got another year coming. I feel very comfortable adding 5,000 to that. Looking at in 2022, let's look at the three years that we've had drought. In 2022, our, our income from camping was over $400,000. We estimated it at like 381,000. In 2023, our camping revenue ended up being about 424,000. We'd left it around 380. So, we've gone over every time. So, for this year, we pushed it a little to 383,000 addition, or initially, but we are on pace using the fall as half of our income and the spring as the other half of our income. We're on pace to hit $450,000. We're going to fly way over that. But are we gambling? We absolutely are gambling. I've went through a period running those parks, running Blackhawk Park for many, many years. I know there was a period of time where four out of six years, we lost Memorial Day weekend and the six weeks after that, and your budget's gone. So, it's kind of the lesser two evils. Do I, do, do we shoot for what we think we're going to get based on predictions of weather and things like that? We can, and we could up it way more than $5,000. But, but then I could be standing up here with a budget that's really imploded. And so, that, that's, we feel $5,000 is, is reasonable to push that. We also have Casey Lake that doesn't have any water in it. And we, we are seeing a trend towards good camping. Our, our reserve sites are getting filled for the summer. There's plenty to do at Hickory Hills. We all know that. But without the water, it, it could have an impact. So, we took that into consideration, too. But the first half of Hickory Hills was, was very good, but we didn't drain the lake until November, December. So, we really don't know. You know, that, that would be pretty normal numbers. The other half of our revenue, where we say commodities, those are sawlogs. Remember that the county has over 6,000 acres of timbered areas. Most of those are river bottom timber, but we have over 6,000 acres. We do timber stand improvement work each and every year on certain sections of those timbers. We strive to keep them healthy and vibrant so that we, when we have impacts like the Dutch elm disease or the Emerald Ash Bore, our forests are not destroyed. What do we try to do? We try to keep diversity of species in there, and the only way you can do that is with human intervention or timber stand improvement work. But along with that timber stand improvement work comes, there's, there's money to be made. Large mature trees, forest management says time for some of those to go. Some of those are walnut trees. Right now, walnut is, is very, very high priced. And so, we have put $15,000 for sawlogs in our budget for about the last five years. Our staff has no trouble going out and doing that work on our own and making that revenue line item. As a matter of fact, just with the areas that they designated to work on for a certain fiscal year, we've actually shot over that a couple of years pretty well. But that's because of the market. The market's very high. We watch the market. We understand what's out there and, and, you know, when it's, when it's good, you should be doing more work. I increased that by $16,500 because all we need to do, basically, the plan we have for fiscal year '25, as far as acres go, we just increased those acres. Now, our staff may not be able to do that, which is fine. We'll simply, we'll simply do our TSI work. We will mark the trees that need to come out of there based on our forest management plans, and we will bid it out, and we will have a contractor come in and do it. It won't, it won't hurt our staff time. They can continue to do what they need to do with all of our other areas. And it was just a matter of how many acres do we want to do. But we like to keep that. If we don't have to bid that out, we don't. We'll do it ourselves. And that's what we, we try to do. And that's why we only initially put 15,000 in to start. But we can, we can double that, which I did. And I've already talked with our wildlife guys. They said, fine, we've got management plans. And as a matter of fact, the whole 6,000-plus acres that we have in forest, we have management plans for all that. We have, we know what trees are there. We, we know what we have. And so, that's how we can, we can look ahead and figure what we can do.
Very good.
Thank you.
Perfect. We should maybe consider selling live edge furniture directly from the trees. That's the rage right now. Full stuff. Thank you, Mike.
The sidewalk repair was, that was still going to go forward? That's right. We're still, you haven't made any plans or thoughts about that, Michelle, as far as changes? That was it?
No. I, you'll see that highlighted under their despite department response column, and that's only because since it was capital, I didn't actually have it in the operating, so it doesn't really affect our 1.6 million conversation.
Okay, good to know. I just wanted to be sure that.
We, we can still go through capital and make sure you're all on board with everything that's in there.
Thank you. About the areas, like you say, the secondary roads?
Mm-hmm.
I think moving deputies fuel to rural fund, that almost sounds like it, like you would do that definitely.
Yeah.
Imagine being opposed to that, but yeah. Oh, did you want to speak to that?
Not on that one necessarily. I was going to let you guys do what you need to with that. I just wanted to touch on the CEGIS one that was on the screen earlier, so.
Yes, true.
You know, everyone's trying to cut things, and we're one of the few up there with a line item that's asking for an increase on it. I just kind of wanted to explain why. This is something I sent to Michelle a while back, but as she mentioned, that's currently been funded at 12,000 for the last several years. If you go back through what we've actually spent out of that between net motion, which may be switched over to 911, I'm not 100% sure on that, but between Vanguard, Shieldware Tech, and US Cellular, Verizon, CFU, DPS, we're actually at about $90,000 a year that we're paying out of that. And then there've been capital expenses, which those are more than likely going to switch over into ALs, but they've been ranged anywhere from the 20 to 70,000, or 35 to 70,000 range. So that even if we take the capital stuff out, even if net motion goes out, we're still at about 90,000 a year, 85,000 a year that's coming out of that. So, I just kind of wanted to explain when we were looking at that initial 12,000, our first thought was we could increase that to 112,000, but we didn't want to throw a $100,000 increase at you. So, we kind of settled on that 75,000.
So, that's only the capital, though?
Yeah.
We pay quite another piece, I want to say 160, 180, and I'm, I'm hoping that most of the things you listed out are covered in that other, other chunk of funding. The one I don't know about is net motion because I don't know if that's actually paid to a different vendor name. So, we should check on that motion. But I, I believe your operating expenses are all covered. I think this is only capital items, and I do agree, some at least is, is funded through IT now. So, that's, that's the question.
Okay.
And we did have some interest in that when we talked about it previously as far as an itemized list of what that included and haven't received that. So, to me, we still leave it on the list and take it out, remove it, and then, again, if there's a need for it later, because that was like a 37% increase.
Yeah.
In that line item. But it's one of those things, I guess, when they could bring that forward to us.
Okay, and we've been working with, with Michelle on that, and so I guess I thought we're further along than we are, apparently, so.
Yeah. Helps us get to that line right now, anyway. So, thoughts? I'll make a motion on that if we keep that in for now, and like I said, because with the understanding that we'll see what those costs are later as well.
Right. And we've, I think the board's clearly demonstrated that when there's an IT need, like we're going to figure it out. But it's, but I, but I agree with like, not having complete understanding of what exactly is in this.
I'll make the motion then that we leave the 63,000 for the CEGIS quest uncut, that we're talking about the CEGIS item.
Okay, all right.
And leaving that on the list to reduce our.
Okay, so you are reducing?
The 63,000.
Okay.
After the community services fund.
There's a lot of little lines on there.
Lots of small lines, small print.
Okay, so, reduce the CEGIS budget by 63,000?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
Just to reiterate, when eligible expenses come up, we're going to hear them. It's just without having a very specified budget, like every other department offers to the board, then for us to budget it seems a little off. So, we're just saying, when an expense comes up, bring it to us. And to Chris's point, we always address our IT concerns and the like, so.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please, Mr. Peter. Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all of our reductions, isn't it?
I was going to say, is that all that?
Well, you haven't got.
Well, with the exception of the, yeah, the top part. Pieces down here.
I think we should probably take action on, on the, on the fuel funding and the rural deputy funding down below here, too. I think, is there, is there anything else up here in that very, in the top part that we haven't addressed?
Anything, Michelle, that you think we haven't given you direction on? Or do you want to?
I feel like I'm comfortable as long as I don't assume you approve something that you haven't. But yeah, it would be good to document the deputy fuel.
Yep.
The moving more patrol to the rural fund and also the general fund transfer to secondary roads, yeah.
Those, I guess I would like Kathy to address those cuts.
Yeah.
Like what that does to our services.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer.
Good morning.
So, we did identify, in looking at the, the cuts for, to the, the general fund transfer of 90% to our secondary road fund, as well as the rural fund transfer decreasing by another 5%, so a collective total of about $160,000 of cuts to our secondary road fund. We did identify four, four primary areas, about $75,000 in crack filling that we would just reduce crack filling on about 16 miles of roadway. This would primarily be, we've identified a few roads next year that we, we just wouldn't be able to crack fill, primarily Winslow Road, Cedar Wopsey Road, a few roads in the northwest portion of the county. Then we identified $30,000 in spot rock that we, we budget about $300,000 in spot rock. We would, we reduce that budget by about 10%. You know, we don't know what the spring of 2025 will look like, but, you know, that's one of those weather dependent things. It just depends on the weather. So, we felt more comfortable reducing spot rock than perhaps salt or fuel, for example. We thought we could reduce $5,000 for our CAD machine replacement, routine rotation replacements. I told you the other day, we weren't going to be backfilling one of our civil engineering technicians, so therefore, we probably don't need, we don't need a CAD computer for that position that we are not filling. And then we had $50,000 in a culvert lining project. It's another way of, rather than digging up a culvert, we would be just lining it with a, I'm not quite sure of the technology, like a fiberglass lining goes through that pipe. We don't have to dig it up and replace it. We, we haven't tried that. We wanted to try that as a means of saving us some money, perhaps. We will just delay that type of work on a, perhaps until fiscal year 2026. So, we identified $160,000 worth of cuts due to, due to less money being transferred to us. This is less than 1% of our budget. We've always been a team player, and we will continue to be a team player with, you know, the rest of the departments. If it doesn't come to us, it can be spent by the other departments, so.
Again, how much was the, the crack sealing part, portion of that?
The crack filling, we were going to reduce that by about 75,000. So, 75, 35, and 50 for a total of 160,000.
And the culvert project, this was really looking at a new method that we would, would maybe want to utilize?
Right. We, we typically do culvert replacements right before we, the year before we, we resurface a roadway, or if we have some bad spots in the county. We just wanted to try this new technology on, you know, we have, we have lots of culverts around the county that we could definitely try it on, but we will.
I think it's a similar kind of process that they offer sometimes for super line replacement stuff, too, right? Okay. I kind of want to see us experiment with it and see if, I wonder if that kind of thing would be inappropriate thing for fund balance, but I don't know.
Well, in our, yeah, the services that we provide, I guess I'm thinking that's the services we provide to residents that we're kind of cutting, and I, if we, they could look at something else.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, because you're right.
And the crack, and the crack sealing, I'd, I'd rather not reduce if we don't have to.
Well, it's a, it's a reduction right now, but it's not as if we're taking it off the table completely, right? We're going to have to come back and do these, whether it's this year or next year. Next year, where we don't have half of the auditor's salary that we're able to ship, right? There's going to be some additional pinch next year. So, I don't, I don't love kicking this can, to be honest, but.
And we have, we have a large budget, we can, these were proposed suggestions. If we spend less money in spot rock overall, we probably may, I mean, we just may need to have less spot rock to place. So maybe that reduction of $30,000, that won't hurt us at all because we just don't need to place that much spot rock. The crack filling, yes, would be, we would be deferring that till the next year.
So I'm curious about your salt use this season.
Yes.
Are you using more or less than a typical season?
So we are using less overall, but we also purchase salt through the DOT contract, and that requires us to purchase a minimum of 12,000 tons. Allison, do you know how many tons we've used this so far?
1,200 tons, but I don't know how we've used this, you know, on an average year, we're using about 900 to 1,100.
For the cities, that contract, you had to do like 80%, and you can tell them how much you want to do. That's what I wondered if, if we've reduced our needs there or not.
We probably told them, I'm sorry, I said 12,000, I meant 1,200 tons of salt.
I was thinking that was a lot.
Yes, we, over the last 10 years, we've reduced that, I believe we used to order 1,800 or 1,500, and I believe now we're targeting about 1,200 tons of salt. And yes, we do have to purchase at least 80% of that, and then we're allowed to go up to like 120% of what we've contracted for. We do like to go into the fall with a full salt, you know, we have numerous facilities around the county. We do like to go into the winter with all of those fall.
There wasn't a salt mine at the bottom of Casey Lake when we drained it? All right, okay.
Keep digging.
With respect to the culvert lining, so without using this newer approach, there's still, is there a particular culvert that we're looking at, or sort of how does?
Do you want to address that line?
For that project, there's a lot of culverts on Donald Road that we've been looking at as an option, we're going to be paving that one in a couple of years. So we do have some time to get that work done. Currently, we've been using two different processes. We've either been replacing them if they are really bad and can't be repaired. If there's just some minor issues with them, or we've just seen some settlement in the road, we have gone through and done a, kind of a grouting mudjacking process to lift the road and kind of fill some voids to do some repair work in lieu of replacement. So we are looking at this as another potential for finding if there is ways to do repairs without having to replace them, or if that grout wasn't necessarily an option for certain applications. So we wanted to try and kind of see if there was more that we could repair instead of fully removing and replace.
So this reduction is really on this newer approach? It's not saying we're going to do 50,000 less in repair to culverts, it is just that we're not going to.
We still have other culvert repairs planned for that year.
Okay.
We still do have a grouting mudjacking contract planned for next fiscal as well, so there still will be those repairs. We still will have replacements that are in the budget. And like Kathy mentioned, with other items, you know, if we underspend some things, it still may be something that we can look at doing if there is room later in the year, too.
How many miles do we do the crack fill now?
I don't know if we, I can tell you that off the top of my head.
I mean, is 16 miles, is that half of it, is that a quarter-ish?
I'm going to guess that's probably about 40% of what they had planned for next year. I want to say it was about a, was it 180 was the original?
I think so.
So, I mean, that was the original budget, I think it was about 180.
Okay.
It's tough, it all depends how many cracks are within one mile. We're paying essentially for within your foot of crack.
Yeah.
Not necessarily necessarily attributed to a mile of road.
And that's where I'm, I'm trying to maybe get to some comfort level with decreasing this up by 75,000, but if, to your point, it's dependent, right, like?
Yeah, well, can I, I want to point something out in the suggestion column, I don't have any reductions for them.
Oh.
You can choose to.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, okay, okay. Thank you, that helps. Not that this isn't a beautiful spreadsheet, but it confuses the hell out of me.
No, it's very messy. I understand it's very messy, that's why I thought I should probably say something.
Yep, thank you. All right.
Obviously, we're rolling the dice a little bit there, but as Davis pointed out earlier, road use tax may be more than what we budgeted today.
And that 25,000, it's included as the HR exit door that was in.
Yeah. That just, okay.
So where do you think we are with our numbers, Michelle?
Well, we're pretty even, we're short just a few thousand in the 1.6. If I, we're just going to pretend that the stuff that went to fund balance doesn't count right now, that'll look difference on, differently on the forms.
I think we should take official action on the moving of the 50% of the balance of patrol deputies to the rural fund and the moving of the fuel.
Is that a motion?
And if you're, yeah.
Go ahead.
I would think you might want to on, and I guess we can reduce it later. Maybe we just wait on the general fund transfer to the secondary roads fund.
Yeah, we can see what we mount with on that, but do the, take the motion on the others, on the deputy's fuel and the deputy's patrol service. Was yours a motion?
Yeah, I can offer that as a motion.
Second.
Okay, so we're talking about moving the 50,000 fuel for deputies from the general fund to the rural fund. And also, we're talking about moving additional, I lost that line.
213,111.
Easy to lose.
113,111, and that's salaries.
Deputy salaries.
Deputy salaries from basic to, general basic to rural basic.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any further discussion or questions?
That's why you have a.
All right, roll call please, Mr. Peter. Little?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Laylan?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Do you want to stake action on the moving of insurance deductible?
Actually, my next suggestion was to eliminate it completely, I just.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right.
Which motion?
The one you just offered up, that one, I was going to say the insurance deductible.
Out of the general supplemental, so we're just going to eliminate funding for the insurance deductible right now.
Can I take just a brief timeout to catch up here?
Yeah.
So the last one for the sheriff's office, who moved in second, and that was Chris?
I made the motion.
I seconded.
Okay, and now we've moved on to.
Moving the insurance deductible, that helps you that, to general supplemental.
Linda just made a motion on the insurance deductible, but it, it's going to be slightly different, it's, we're just not going to fund it.
Yep.
Okay, we're just not going to fund it.
Out of.
Okay.
Either source, either general or supplemental.
Okay, so do not fund the insurance deductible of 125,000.
Yes.
And, second, thank you.
All right, all right, we have a second? All right, all right, roll call please, Mr. Peter. Duncan?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Laylan?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
I think we don't need to take action on the four items highlighted in green. I'm suggesting we're not going to do those right now. I'm, other than the items, and there's only been a handful, but the items that you specifically want to do different in the general fund, I'm going to assume we're doing everything except the three or four that you wanted to change. Okay.
You happy?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you're just talking about the general basic?
Yes, I just thought, well, let's close the book on that one before we move on, and I don't want, I just don't want any misunderstandings when I put it together.
Yeah.
We didn't, we're going to leave that, that may be an action they take later or at a hearing or something. Okay, so for all in agreement to that, let's move on to general supplemental.
Is anybody in need of a brief recess?
Sure.
Declare a brief recess. Okay, Michelle, what else would you like us to cover for today?
Okay, let's just review the general supplemental a bit. I think we've talked about all these, that negative 47, 494 is moving grant salary to that fund, so that'll raise taxes there. We had talked about, Tuesday, we talked about just kind of freezing our budget for insurance, even though they're projecting pretty substantial increases, but that's what the 51,388 is. And then the 125, we've already taken care of. The other thing is using the rural supplemental levy, which is again, going to raise taxes in that fund for a portion of their employee benefits because we're going to exceed the rural levy cap, which I was very sad about.
Yeah.
This is to general supplemental?
Rural supplemental. I just left it there.
Before we certify.
I didn't do a separate thing for rural supplemental because we had used that before. So I don't know if, I don't know that we need to vote on anything for rural or general supplemental. Yeah, so then we, I'm sorry, that was general supplemental, then let's go to rural. You do need to choose at least what you want to do about probably for libraries and soil conservation district.
We put them in for the full 12%, we've historically given them three, until the last couple of years, we've given them 6%. Has anybody got thoughts on, like, leaving them at 6% at least for this year, or no?
If there is, so where are we butting up with between? If we gave soil and water the full 10,000, and if we did the library full thing, are we, are we over the cap for the rural levy at that point, then?
I think you will be, I could, I can relook at the employee benefits. The thing on rural that we're doing, we're increasing that levy at least 30 cents, I think. So that's going to be a pretty stiff increase for them.
If we reduce the libraries in half, do we know what number would help us, like I say, of those two that would be sufficient to?
Well, we've made decisions and the other funds are going to keep that up, so it just depends on what you want to do. So their increase, the libraries, for example, they requested an increase of 21,624. That brings the total investment to them is like 201,000. If you, but that was a 12% increase, so if you held them to a 6% increase, you can reduce that by the 10,012 that's on there. And, yeah, soil and water, they've been only funded at 2,000, requested 10, so that was an increase of 8. Just depends what.
You gave them a little bit more than half.
Anything they get is going to be very helpful to them, and it will leverage them being able to access some grant funding and things.
I guess, I guess I'm okay with the 50%, or reducing by 50% the ask for the library. I would like to fund the whole 10,000 for soil and water, just because they really do leverage it into a lot more money, I think. And it's been decades since they've come back, and I don't think they'll come back again soon for an increase.
That's probably.
Might be 3,000 more than what you have in that line item. I mean.
I'll have to, I'll have to play with, I'll see what I can do with the rural supplemental. I, I was, I mean, I wasn't jumping to using that because every penny that goes into that is a tax increase, but we can do that. So let me see what, I'll just send something out to you to see how that fun.
And for now, we'd be increasing that, but this is really like, would help us setting that max, those max rates, and we can cut back if we had to.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess for that, because I wouldn't mind seeing what it is, but having the full library request in there.
Okay.
And then, because we can, we can come back on it if we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that. Okay, I think that's, I believe that's everything, all the options I was.
Okay.
Came up with, but open to others you might have.
Not so much on this list, but it's something that came up in the last week that for us to consider, I think was the, at assessors meeting at the conference board, TJ mentioned that there was a vehicle that the sheriff was going to swap out, he, the four of them for use. I think he said it was a 2016 Ford Explorer, and mentioned the fact that if the board approved it, that that would be, you know, so he hadn't placed an item for, line item in for vehicle purchase. And I think there were several of us that took attention to that, that that's a county vehicle kind of being given to another entity or being the assessor's office. So it might be something we'd want to consider, and it sounded like it was in good condition enough that he was very, you know, interested in it. But I just thought, and that could be one of the vehicles we'd utilize, I would assume, maybe for health, and then reduce one of their three vehicles out, so that could be a savings, just something to consider and think about. But that also in good intentions for them as well, to make them know if that was a board decision, that we would like it used in that way to let TJ know because he'd need to make that change to his budget to put the vehicle in, and he had quite a few reserves as well. So it wasn't kind of putting them in a pinch, but that was just the, was that, I know there were others that were probably in that conversation or heard it, but I just thought that was something that we thought we need to discuss maybe in our budget, Michelle.
Yeah. I think you captured that, yeah.
Okay, just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly support reutilizing our vehicles wherever we can until we reach my dream of having a yearly demolition derby with the stuff.
You're in your dreams.
I want to see a mortar grader take on the. So do you know if, do you think we need to put, make an agenda item on that?
I don't know, why do we need to go forward on that, I mean.
I have not spoken to anybody at sheriff's office, maybe we need to start there first.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely do, I was going to say.
Find out, not necessarily right now, Nate, but.
No, I just meant, I didn't know if he's prepared to even talk about it, I had him put down the spot.
Captain Herbstal's with all our vehicles and whether they're traded in or sent to IT or wherever, so I honestly don't know anything about that plan, so.
Okay, fair enough, I didn't know that you, if you did or not, no, that's all right.
So we can just put that on as a agenda item, maybe, we up?
Yeah, I was going to say we.
Maybe in a couple of weeks.
I was going to say, because we don't need to make a motion to look into it further, but. I was going to say, because we don't need to make a motion to look into it further, but yeah, I was going to say.
I'll find out about the vehicle and.
Yeah.
I'm sure Nate will be happy to assist me.
Yeah. It sounded like it was a pretty good vehicle. So like I said.
Yeah. Thank you.
And was there any further discussion on positions from the other day that we?
I was going to say staff. We need, and we can do approvals on. Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea now.
Be able to do approvals.
Yeah.
With one gone now, but we'll see. Yeah, Al, you with, are you feeling up to talking a little bit about your position? I know you didn't get the opportunity on Tuesday.
It was a little under the weather, so thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the two positions we have here, so the one was for the system admin. And that was, that was previously a vacancy on the sheriff's side. That is a position that I really would like to get, see it filled. I know there is, where the funding source come from is kind of tricky. So Michelle can speak, speak on that and how that will work. But that, I, I do want to clarify, that is a position that we would like to request for this fiscal year, FY '24.
For current?
For current. Because it's, it's been a vacancy. We've been really, we've been spread a little thin and we'd really like to fill that position this fiscal year. I apologize if that has not been specified.
I don't think I understood.
And that could be a completely different discussion and agenda item, but.
And I assume that you mean because you need to, there's some needs not being met at the sheriff's office or you need to do to.
Well, in general, we, we were, we were hoping to have that position filled right away at the transition. I think things got busy. I think the comp study was part of that too, so things got delayed. And then now finding out that it's a different funding source, that, that does complicate things. So I want to just make sure that everything is good in the back end before we make that formal list. So just wanted to make, make sure you guys are clear on that. That's good.
Yeah. I'm supportive, I think I'm clear.
Yeah.
And the structural thing, I think we talked about before, I think. Succession planning and all, all of that.
Yeah, I was, I was fine with the succession planning that you talked about with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other position as well.
So how would you be funding that for 2024? Do you?
Do you have money in your budget?
For the.
Since you surprised us with that one.
I think that would ultimately happen to come back to the board anyways. Right? So do we, we don't need that answer.
We can table that.
We don't need that answer today.
That's fine.
Yep.
But you can propose on agenda, I have some time in the coming weeks.
Sure.
To, so we can move forward on that and maybe try to, try to identify some revenue funding sources for it.
Yep. I think that was also, sorry.
No, no.
Anybody have questions? No, no, that's good. Unless somebody else has a question for you. Any question, Tom? Okay. Well, Rory was going to check, I don't know, is he here today? You were going to check on your maintenance budget as well because yours was a request that still could come back to the board. Is he gone?
Online, can you hear me?
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, kind of.
Yes, you were going to be checking into your budget too because the position you were adding, you were really considering or wanted us to consider at least putting it on for '24.
Yes, and first off, I apologize, Linda, you had asked the question. And yes, we actually, looking at our budget and. Get my attention on Tuesday, but we did have a property maintenance assistant gap of.
He's sick today?
He has enough savings to cover it.
Okay.
Can I just say?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was going to say. And to, to start like in a March, April, because that's what I was thinking. Okay. It wasn't maybe for. Probably by mid-April, it can be absorbed in his budget. But what he was telling you was that we did have an employee leave. Yeah. And was replaced with a lower pay. And there was a gap in there before the new person started. So we were able to identify enough savings to allow the new position. Should you approve it in the '25 budget, of course, that we can start it.
Sure, sure. I was laughing because he, we didn't think he understood, heard my question. Now we can't hear you.
I know, it's kind of fair. Turn about, it's fair play, right?
Yeah. Okay. And we've answered the county, the auditor supervisor's one, it seems like we, oh, yes.
Just had a question for the board. With the four departments looking for, you know, full-time employee, zero-sum game. If I lose an employee, and I know it's HR issue, office specialist, is there considerations that maybe that spot will be delayed to support these four requests going into FY '25? Just a question I had.
No. Good to ask the questions. No, no, that's fine.
I don't think at this time we've, we've required any delays.
No. I don't think anybody's, yes, you've been looking at that or considering it.
No.
Are there any other questions from department heads, I guess, that have concerns or comments?
And I think, I'm definitely supportive of the position increasing the full-time in health. Just because I think she clearly demonstrated the extra burden put on public health nurses and how hard it is to recruit for those, you know. This position will keep a lot up.
Oh, were you walking and talking?
You're too late.
Did you get by me already?
Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just, sorry about that. We're having some mechanical problems here at the courthouse, so I was trying to deal with that too at the same time. But yeah, we, we had a chance to go back and look at our operating budget. And what we discovered or what we remembered was we did have a gap within our budget from our property assistance position that we feel that would cover at least a couple of months under this operating budget to be able to acquire that position earlier. And quite honestly, it might take us that much time to find that position. So I think that would work out well for us. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
To your, to your point about the, the public health.
Yep.
I'm totally in agreement that we're getting to a point of overworking staff and in ways that isn't their, their role to have nurses perform some of those, the community side is, is, we run the risk of burnout pretty quick there.
For, definitely serious, I was, I mean, I serve on this advisory committee for the underserved agricultural communities. And there were a couple of public health employees assigned to that board. And then going to the meeting the other day to find out, well, none of them were public health employees anymore. So it's kind of just, just kind of a real world example of what Caitlin's been talking about, the workforce challenges that they're facing and so.
I mean, I know we tried the temp in hopes that that case load would go down, but it's actually gone the wrong direction. So I think we just have to fill it.
And the increase being the three tenths.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and I definitely support Kathy's proposal. And I appreciate that she, you know, saw an opportunity that there was an opening in the, in the office and use that to, to kind of reexamine where, where they most need people. So if we want to take an action on, on all these items, we've already taken action on the board supervisors and the county auditor position, but we could take just one motion on, on the other four.
I'll make a motion to approve the positions as outlined for IT, maintenance, health, and engineering.
Second?
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing done, roll call please, Mr. Veder. Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz? Yes. Resolution carries. Right. All right, what else would you like us to, to cover for today, Michelle?
I think we can stop there unless you are just itching to go through capital in excruciating detail.
Well, you wanted to have on Tuesday's budget that.
Yes.
Just to advertise for the levy. But I was going to say, you don't expect any action, budget action on Tuesday or no? What are your thoughts?
Well.
I know a couple of us are gone.
Right, that's why, I didn't know if you would want to, I guess. So what I would like to have set the date of hearing for that proposed tax rate hearing, the first hearing, that I will compile everything from today to get to those rates. And. And it's up to you if you, I think it, I mean, I, it's really up to you what you want to do after that. I mean, we can do more capital review, otherwise I don't know that there's.
And we need to take action at some point on what we're potentially bonding for.
Correct. That's why I'm talking about the capital. We'll have to go through, make sure you agree with funding everything that's being requested. And if you, you know.
And the way that it's being requested, as you said.
Yeah, I've put in the reserves bucket, the things that the lawyers are telling me don't qualify for bonding right now.
Okay.
So. And there, I don't know, there, there's things to think about with that. We might only want to bond every two years because our regular CIP isn't that much. So there's a little more work to be done on that, but.
Okay.
It's probably not as urgent.
So if there are some of us absent next week, then we're okay. I'm alerting all of you as well, but I meant to you to wait another additional week or something.
Yeah, I think since we did all those, and I'll send out, once I have it finalized, information about the rates and that may make you want to have more conversation. I don't know, we'll see.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that's kind of what we need to see. You're right.
All right. I guess I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.